Good evening, welcome to all. This Coleson City Council Joint Work Session is called Order. Very pleased to have with us tonight our school board members and I'd like to introduce each one of them if I could. We have our school board chair, Dr. Chris Burbage. We have our vice chair, Mr. Michael DeBose. School board member, Ms. Kristen Jones. School board member, Dr. Melissa Bartlett. School board member, Ms. Maxwell. School board member, Mr. Andrew Dell. And school board member, Ms. Caitlin Osborne. And in addition to that, we have with us our school superintendent, Mr. Artie Tillitt. Also have our assistant superintendent for operations. So thank you all very much for being here. You all know we very much value the great work and relationships we have with our school board and with staff in the school board office. And we like to do things like this to reinforce the relationships to the greater good of all that we serve. And with that, I'd also like to recognize Ms. Ashley Ide, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction and Support Services. And Ms. Tracy Spence, Executive Director of Operations. So thanks so much for being here, we do appreciate your presence and support. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Burbage.
Thank you, Mr. Hucks. Just had a quick statement that I wanted to make as we get started. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Coleson City School Board, I'd like to thank our city council for inviting us tonight and for your continued partnership and support of Coleson City Public Schools. Our shared commitment to providing an excellent education for the students of Coleson is what makes this community so strong. We appreciate your collaboration and support as we work together to sustain and enhance the high-quality educational opportunities that our families expect and our students deserve. This evening, our superintendent and members of the leadership team are pleased to share an update on Coleson Schools. Thank you again for your partnership and for all you do to support our schools and this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burbage. And we have Mr. Tillitt here, he's going to give us a presentation on the school board.
Whichever's best for you, Mr. Tillitt.
There we go. Well, good evening, Mayor Hucks, members of city council and members of the school board. It is our privilege this evening for members of our leadership team and I to provide a brief overview of the state of Coleson City Public Schools. I'm pleased to report that our schools continue to perform among the top divisions in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Our students consistently achieve at high levels academically, demonstrate excellence on state assessments, advanced coursework, and college and career readiness indicators. These accomplishments are a direct reflection of the commitment of our teachers and staff, the strong partnership we share with families, and the ongoing support of our community and local government. Operationally, our schools remain focused on providing safe, well-maintained, and efficient learning environments. We continue to invest in technology, facilities, and transportation to ensure that our students and staff have the tools and resources they need for success. Financially, we remain responsible stewards of public funds, balancing the needs for innovation and growth with continued commitment to fiscal discipline. I want to thank both city council and the school board for your continued collaboration and support of Coleson Schools. Together, we are ensuring that our students receive high-quality education in a community that values and sustains excellence. At this time, I'll turn it over to our instructional, operational, and financial leads to provide a more detailed report of their respective areas of oversight. First up is our assistant superintendent for instruction and student services, Ms. Ashley Ide, who will provide some instructional highlights. Followed by our assistant superintendent for operations, Mr. Andrew Roberts, with an operations update. And concluding our presentation this evening will be our CFO, Ms. Tracy Spence, with a brief financial report.
I absolutely love teaching at Chris Primary School. I feel extremely supported. I've received lots of training in the science of reading and I've learned so much that I didn't know even above and beyond what I learned in my master's level programs. I feel very prepared and very excited to help students continue their journey learning to read. In addition to the training I've taken, I feel very supported here at school. We have multiple reading specialists at the school that help both teachers and students succeed. We have master specialists that come in as well and help interpret the curricula and make sure that we're teaching the very best that the students need to learn.
One of the things I like about Coleson City Public Schools is our smaller class sizes compared to the other schools in our region. Because of this, we're able to meet the needs of all of our students, no matter what they are. We offer unique learning opportunities here, especially at the elementary school. We have learning pods where classes can come out of your classrooms and collaborate or do more project-based learning and creative ways to teach using that common space. Also, take advantage of our outdoor classroom, which is really exciting for the students to come out, be in the fresh air, and just be a part of our very special environment here at the elementary school. We're able to bring members from our community in that are master art winners and naturalists that can give us lessons on local habitats and this helps supplement our work in our classrooms.
Along with our core classes, middle school students could take advantage of the variety of electives and select courses that are of great interest to them. Whether it is forensic science, art, chorus, drama, Spanish, French, band, technology education, or creative writing, students are able to explore and discover new interests. Students can build into their schedule classes that can help support them academically or even propel them into advanced high school for their classes. PMS has a little something for everyone and the PMS culture supports students as they begin to come into their own and develop their unique strengths and passion.
As students transition into high school, additional courses become available. At Coleson High School, we offer over 25 AP or dual-enrollment courses that students can take in a variety of content areas. Besides courses that students can take on campus, we work with additional outside partners such as the Governor's School for Science and Technology. New Horizons offers a variety of CTE programs as well as the aviation academy in partnership with the Purdue School. Coleson City Public Schools has a variety of partnerships that help round out the education here. We operate close to the NASA, Jefferson Lab, and WHRO. Coleson City Public Schools has also been awarded financial grants with the Department of Defense. Luckily, we're fortunate to work with a variety of organizations that provide support. The Coleson Education Foundation provides scholarships for our students and grants for our teachers to supplement educational opportunities. Additional organizations that work through Chris High School include the Exchange Club, Alliance Club, and the Kwanis, all working with our students with volunteer opportunities and outreach that they can give back to our community.
Through our College Math Program, DHS students can collaborate with Virginia Peninsula Community College to work toward and earn an associate's degree while still in high school. We are excited to offer these opportunities to empower our students, expand their academic potential, and prepare them for success in college, careers, and beyond.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes. Along with other classes.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes. Along with other classes.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes.
Along with other classes.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes.
Along with other classes.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes.
Along with other classes.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes.
Along with other classes.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes.
Along with other classes.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes.
Along with other classes.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes.
Along with other classes.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes.
Along with other classes.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes.
Along with other classes.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes.
Along with other classes.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes.
Along with other classes.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes.
Along with other classes.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes.
Along with other classes.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes.
Along with other classes.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes.
Along with other classes.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes.
Along with other classes.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes.
Along with other classes.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes.
Along with other classes.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes.
Along with other classes.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes.
Along with other classes.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes.
Along with other classes.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes.
Along with other classes.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes.
Along with other classes.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes.
Along with other classes.
Here at DHS, we offer 26 Virginia high school league sports and activities along with other classes.
Good evening, welcome to all. This Coleson City Council Joint Work Session is called Order. Very pleased to have with us tonight our school board members and I'd like to introduce each one of them if I could. We have our school board chair, Dr. Chris Burbage. We have our vice chair, Mr. Michael DeBose. School board member, Ms. Kristen Jones. School board member, Dr. Melissa Bartlett. School board member, Ms. Maxwell. School board member, Mr. Andrew Dell. And school board member, Ms. Caitlin Osborne. And in addition to that, we have with us our school superintendent, Mr. Artie Tillitt. Also have our assistant superintendent for operations. So thank you all very much for being here. You all know we very much value the great work and relationship we have with our school board and with staff in the school board office. And we like to do things like this to reinforce the relationships to the greater good of all that we serve. And with that, I'd also like to recognize Ms. Ashley Ide, the assistant superintendent for instruction and support services, and Ms. Tracy Spence, the executive director of operations. So thanks so much for being here, we do appreciate your presence and support. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Burbage.
Thank you, Mr. Hucks. Just had a quick statement that I wanted to make as we get started. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Coleson City School Board, I'd like to thank our city council for inviting us tonight and for your continued partnership and support of Coleson City Public Schools. Our shared commitment to providing an excellent education for the students of Coleson is what makes this community so strong. We appreciate your collaboration and support as we work together to sustain and enhance the high-quality educational opportunities that our families expect and our students deserve. This evening, our superintendent and members of the leadership team are pleased to share an update on Coleson Schools. Thank you again for your partnership and for all you do to support our schools and this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burbage. And we have Mr. Tillitt here, he's going to give us a presentation on the school board.
Whichever's best for you, Mr. Tillitt.
There we go. Well, good evening, Mayor Hucks, members of city council and members of the school board. It is our privilege this evening for members of our leadership team and I to provide a brief overview of the state of Coleson City Public Schools. I'm pleased to report that our schools continue to perform among the top divisions in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Our students consistently achieve at high levels academically, demonstrate excellence on state assessments, advanced coursework, and college and career readiness indicators. These accomplishments are a direct reflection of the commitment of our teachers and staff, the strong partnership we share with families, and the ongoing support of our community and local government. Operationally, our schools remain focused on providing safe, well-maintained, and efficient learning environments. We continue to invest in technology, facilities, and transportation to ensure that our students and staff have the tools and resources they need for success. Financially, we remain responsible stewards of public funds, balancing the needs for innovation and growth with continued commitment to fiscal discipline. I want to thank both city council and the school board for your continued collaboration and support of Coleson Schools. Together, we are ensuring that our students receive high-quality education in a community that values and sustains excellence. At this time, I'll turn it over to our instructional, operational, and financial leads to provide a more detailed report of their respective areas of oversight. First up is our assistant superintendent for instruction and student services, Ms. Ashley Ide, who will provide some instructional highlights. Followed by our assistant superintendent for operations, Mr. Andrew Roberts, with an operations update. And concluding our presentation this evening will be our CFO, Ms. Tracy Spence, with a brief financial report.
I absolutely love teaching at Chris Primary School. I feel extremely supported. I've received lots of training in the science of reading and I've learned so much that I didn't know even above and beyond what I learned in my master's level programs. I feel very prepared and very excited to help students continue their journey learning to read. In addition to the training I've taken, I feel very supported here at school. We have multiple reading specialists at the school that help both teachers and students succeed. We have master specialists that come in as well and help interpret the curricula and make sure that we're teaching the very best that the students need to learn.
One of the things I like about Coleson City Public Schools is our smaller class sizes compared to the other schools in our region. Because of this, we're able to meet the needs of all of our students, no matter what they are. We offer unique learning opportunities here, especially at the elementary school. We have learning pods where classes can come out of your classrooms and collaborate or do more project-based learning and creative ways to teach using that common space. Also, take advantage of our outdoor classroom, which is really exciting for the students to come out, be in the fresh air, and just be a part of our very special environment here at the elementary school. We're able to bring members from our community in that are master art winners and naturalists that can give us lessons on local habitats and this helps supplement our work in our classrooms.
Along with our core classes, middle school students could take advantage of the variety of electives and select courses that are of great interest to them. Whether it is forensic science, art, chorus, drama, Spanish, French, band, technology education, or creative writing, students are able to explore and discover new interests. Students can build into their schedule classes that can help support them academically or even propel them into advanced high school for their classes. PMS has a little something for everyone and the PMS culture supports students as they begin to come into their own and develop their unique strengths and passion.
As students transition into high school, additional courses become available. At Coleson High School, we offer over 25 AP or dual-enrollment courses that students can take in a variety of content areas. Besides courses that students can take on campus, we work with additional outside partners such as the Governor's School for Science and Technology. New Horizons offers a variety of CTE programs as well as the aviation academy in partnership with the Purdue School. Coleson City Public Schools has a variety of partnerships that help round out the education here. We operate close to the NASA, Jefferson Lab, and WHRO.
with other clubs and organizations. Whether you're interested in athletics, academics, the arts, or leadership, there's something there for everyone. These activities aren't just about competition, they're about building teamwork, leadership, and character. Students develop skills and go far beyond the classroom and carry them for life.
One of the things that makes Pecosin High School truly unique is our lunch program. This innovative approach gives every student a dedicated break during the school day to get extra academic support, attend plonder organization meetings, workout in the gym or weight room, catch up on study, or just enjoy some fresh air. At Pecosin High School, we believe in educating the whole student academically, socially, and emotionally. We're proud to give our students every opportunity to thrive.
Right. Well, thank you. Good evening, city council, school board, and community members. This evening, I'm honored to present on the exceptional achievements of PCPS, which are a testament to our tradition of excellence. To provide context for our academic performance, we'll start by looking at regional and state level comparisons. This data offers valuable insight into how Pecosin students perform relative to their peers and highlights some areas of continued strength and achievement. This comparison shows how Pecosin students perform in relation to our neighboring divisions. Our results demonstrate that PCPS continues to rank among the highest-performing divisions across all subject areas, both regionally and in the state. As you've just seen our outstanding results from our SOL assessments this past spring, I want to share how these results and other data points will be used in regards to accreditation and accountability. This brings us to the Virginia Department of Education's New School Performance and Support Framework, which represents a significant shift in how schools are measured and supported. Unlike the previous system, which is on the right, for accreditation, which combined accreditation and accountability into a single designation, the new model separates compliance with state requirements from student performance outcomes. Each school will now receive two distinct labels: a performance category label reflecting student outcomes, and an accreditation label reflecting compliance with state requirements. The school performance framework will assign labels such as distinguished, on track, off track, or needs intensive support, while the accreditation system will continue to provide labels as fully accredited, conditionally accredited, or accreditation denied. At this time, the state has not yet analyzed and released all of the data needed to assign these summative labels. The video we is using a third-party vendor to ensure all of the data is accurate. At the same time, our Director of Accountability and Assessment, Mrs. Kim Montalvo, has been working diligently to review the data on our end to ensure our numbers are accurate and truly reflect the work of our PCPS students and staff. We appreciate her hard work and attention to detail in this very important matter. We anticipate sharing the finalized performance and accreditation labels in late November or hopefully at our next school board meeting. I thought it'd be prudent for you to understand how we get those accreditation labels, what goes into it, aside from the raw data you saw on the first graph which showed our SOL assessments. So to provide that clear picture of how the new accountability system works, let's review these categories and how they're going to evaluate schools. Elementary and middle schools will be scored on mastery, growth, and readiness, while high schools will be scored on mastery, readiness, and graduation. Mastery includes performance on the reading, math, and science SOL assessments, and the VAP, which are alternative assessments, and progress in English language proficiency. Growth for elementary and middle schools reflects expected progress in reading and math. Readiness in elementary and middle school includes chronic absenteeism, performance tasks for the five Cs, which are still in development by the state, and advanced coursework in middle school. Readiness in high school includes chronic absenteeism, the six-year extended graduation rate, including applied studies diplomas, and the Ready for Life 3E Framework. Additionally, high schools will be scored on graduation rates using the federal graduation indicator. The Ready for Life 3E Readiness Framework focuses on students graduating high school ready for enrollment, employment, and/or enlistment. Schools will attain points for students that meet defined expectations across enrollment for classes such as dual enrollment, where they are credit-bearing coursework, for instance, our College Now program, where they earned that dual credit. Employment for high-demand industry-recognized credentials, and enlistment, and that would be measured based on the scores on the ASVAB, which is offered at the high school. The new accountability system underscores the need for strong student outcomes. In Pecosin, we focus on meeting that challenge through rigorous and advanced coursework, ensuring that students are prepared for college and careers. PCPS has a longstanding commitment to expanding opportunity for students to engage in rigorous college-level learning through advanced placement, dual enrollment, and honors courses. The total enrollment across these courses for the 25-26, so our current school year, is approximately 1,052, which is an increase over the past four years. In addition, we have students enrolled at the Governor's School of Science and Technology pursuing advanced coursework and additional dual enrollment opportunities. As we expand our advanced coursework and other rigorous opportunities for our students, we are investing in their success. These programs will have real benefits for student achievement, but they do come with increased costs, such as curriculum, tech, staffing, transportation, and more. We believe these investments are essential to sustaining Pecosin's tradition of excellence and preparing every student for a successful future. And of course, this is aligned with our strategic plan Focus Area 1, Objective 1, to assess, enhance, and expand meaningful programs with real-world applications for all students. Thankfully, last spring, the board approved a budget that allowed us to pursue our dual enrollment goals, ensuring that our first cohort of students have the opportunity to earn an associate degree through coursework at both Pecosin High School and Virginia Peninsula Community College. Not only does PCPS offer the associate's degree, which is 60-plus credit hours, to qualified students, our program of studies includes the courses to earn the Passport, which you see is 16 credit hours, or the Uniform Certificate of General Studies, UCGS, and even simply just individual courses that align with the students' interests and goals, all aligning with our strategic plan. This initiative not only enhances our students' academic experiences, but also strengthens our ability to attract and retain high-quality teachers, which again, supports our strategic For this school year, we have currently 180 course enrollments and 158 students enrolled in our dual enrollment courses. In addition to advanced coursework, Pecosin City Public Schools offers a robust career and technical education program that includes both in-house courses and opportunities through New Horizons Regional Education Center. Students gain advanced training and earn industry-recognized certifications in high-demand fields such as healthcare, skilled trades, cybersecurity, and public safety. Many also earn dual credit enrollment, preparing them for success in both college and career pathways. Our CTE programs continue to expand, with more than 230 middle school and 600 high school enrollments, including students participating at New Horizons, for a total of approximately 830 CTE course enrollments. This represents an increase of about 130 CTE enrollments compared to the 24-25 school year. Building on the hands-on training and certifications provided by New Horizons, students can participate in the Good Life Solution Program, which connects graduates directly with local employers for full-time employment, training, and mentoring. Participating employers commit to supporting students by providing a smooth transition into the workforce with competitive pay, benefits, and opportunities for career advancement. This collaboration not only helps students launch meaningful careers, but also strengthens our Hampton Roads economy by supplying local industries with a reliable pipeline of skilled talent. PCPS students can also access the Denvey Aviation Academy, a CTE magnet program in Newport News that offers hands-on training in aviation, engineering, and aerospace technology, equipping them with skills for careers in aviation-related industries. Something close to my heart. New to PCPS this school year is the K-2 kindergarten through second grade STEAM classroom focusing on science, technology, engineering, the arts, and math. The STEAM classroom is an environment that aims to take our youngest learners and encourage them to think critically and work collaboratively. Throughout this school year, the students will be given hands-on opportunities to integrate and expand on their understanding of science and math standards, and will receive instruction to meet the computer science standards as well. In the first quarter of STEAM, students have been working on tasks to practice collaboration, communication, and fostering critical thinking and creative thinking. Students have begun learning about the steps of the engineering design process. Some activities include kindergartners saving bears from lava and building chika-chika-boom-boom trees, counting the number of letters that fit on their tree. First graders have built and measured paper chains and built arch bridges to hold the weight of a small pumpkin. Second graders have built paper airplanes and discussed the forces that affect their flight, and they have built and tested catapults. In this picture, you'll see the kindergartners working on their chika-chika-boom-boom trees and them using building materials to save their bears from the lava. To note, the teacher made it more difficult each step of the way, and building materials were taken away, so they had to be even more creative with their building process. Students are learning about accepting failures, trying again, and making improvements, all to build resiliency and flexible thinking. Students are beginning the second quarter by learning about and practicing coding. The engineering design process and problem-based learning opportunities are the focus as we seek to allow students to solve age-appropriate, real-world problems in a fun, critical-thinking environment. We want to acknowledge and thank Ms. Amanda Vollman, our STEAM teacher, as she has launched this class from the ground up with a keen focus on student success and fun. I should mention, these first graders are working together on their paper chains and using kiva planks to build a maze, and second graders are building pyramids of cups. And of course, I think the arch bridges are in this one as well.
That was our eighth graders at Pecosin Middle School doing some pretty incredible work in their technology systems classes. They have been designing and building solar-powered cars equipped with gears and pulleys, as well as creating hydraulic machines. These hands-on projects give students a chance to apply that engineering design process that we're now trying to create or start in our K-2 and hopefully build up. I wanted to say a big thank you to Ms. Desiree Barchie for fostering a classroom where students are excited to learn, explore, design, redesign, and experiment. While we are highlighting two of our CTE teachers, Ms. Vollman and Ms. Barchie, this evening, we truly appreciate all of our CTE teachers and staff who work every day to create meaningful, real-world learning experiences that help our students thrive beyond the classroom. Our students' work shows creativity, skill, and dedication every day. At Pecosin City Public Schools, we're committed to preparing every student for a successful and meaningful life while empowering them to grow and achieve in a safe, supportive community. Together, we continue a proud tradition of excellence.
All right, good evening again. I want to start off my operations highlight presentation, I hope. I believe I've lost connectivity. There we go. All right, with the human resource slide here, first, I want to start with expressing our gratitude to the city council and the school board for their continued support and commitment to our staff. Your approval for the recent pay increases has made a tremendous difference in our ability to recruit, retain, and grow talented educators and support staff. We are proud of this progress, but we also recognize that our goal remains to reach and maintain the regional market average for staff pay. This continued focus ensures that our employees feel valued and that our compensation remains competitive with surrounding divisions. We're very proud that we're closing the gap that once was $10,000 to $15,000 in pay for neighboring divisions to much less. So I think this has been a huge help, so thank you. Just wanted to start off the presentation with that. Another thing to point out on the slide here is our retention rates. So from the 23-24 school year to last school year, we went from an 83.8% retention rate all the way up to 93%. And out of that 93%, the, you know, 7% roughly that left us, one was a relocation to another neighboring school division, but the rest were just relocations in general for various reasons that they actually had to move. So it wasn't their choice really to leave Pecosin City Schools, it was just a choice to relocate based on, you know, a spouse's employment or whatever. So I thought that was very strong and something that we're very proud of to show that we are retaining our employees. As you know, higher retention rates not only saves on recruitment costs, but also provides students with greater consistency and stability, which are our goals. We are fully staffed in instruction this year, pleased to announce that. While other school divisions seem to be struggling to find teachers for all grade levels, we pulled that off. Again, this is an accomplishment strictly tied to the contributions of the city and school board to invest in our staff compensation plans. We did have eight returning staff members, meaning that, you know, they left, but they chose to come back to us. This shows that our work environment, culture, and improvements in pay and support are making a real difference. When former employees choose to come back, it speaks volumes about the positive directions we continue to be heading. We are projecting fewer vacancies moving forward, which is a good thing. We want to make sure that we're all fully staffed. This is a high priority for us to keep our consistency and integrity of all academic programs and student activities. Our current vacancies, as you can see, student services, that's really in our speech and language positions, I think we have three of those open, and the rest, as you can read, some pairs, and we always have some coaching vacancies depending on the season. So overall, very good for human resources. Moving on to transportation, I'm pleased to share now that we have hired two new bus drivers, fully licensed and ready to go, and they've been driving for several weeks now. So that means that we are, we do have permanently assigned a driver for each route. You know, unless a driver's out sick or something like that, we shouldn't have to double back or do a combination run. So that's a huge improvement from the start of the school year. So I want to thank all of our staff and transportation to make that happen, that's been a combined effort, and even with our HR department for that recruitment. We do have four new school buses that we got across from last year. This has definitely improved our fleet. These new buses improve safety, efficiency, and comfort for both our students and our drivers. They are equipped with modern safety features and are much more fuel-efficient, which helps us reduce our long-term maintenance and operational costs. This investment supports our commitment to maintaining a reliable and up-to-date fleet for daily operations and field trips. Another important improvement we made last year was we added GPS trackers to all our school buses. This technology allows our transportation department to monitor routes in real time, improve efficiency, and quickly respond to any issues on the road. I know that there was a situation... I know that there was a situation early in the field hockey season that a bus broke down in Chesapeake. This was late at night, and I was able to locate that bus using this software, tell the wrecker exactly where to go, and we made a smooth transition with the buses meeting each other and able to get those kids home safely. So that alone so far has been worth its weight in gold for me, to be able to do that, not, you know, taking the guesswork out of it. It's not only just about tracking the buses, but it also will help us verify arrival times, ensure routes are running as planned, and also provides this important information like fuel levels, the miles per hour a driver is driving through the continuous route. I can look back through the history, I think it goes back a couple of weeks, just to make sure, you know, that we're obeying all the laws and, you know, I get some random calls saying, hey, this is doing this, or this is doing that. I actually can go back and check that information to make sure that we are, you know, holding ourselves accountable, and so far, we've been above board, so please report that. But this level of visibility, we've just never had before, and I like all the diagnostics this system gives us, because not only does it track the fuel and stuff like that, but, you know, it does prevent a maintenance schedules and things of that nature that helps us keep on top of things. So really good software with that GPS tracker. The parent app, the Stop Finder, we have fully launched that. We're trying to get the participation rate up with parents. Right now, we're setting about 31, 32%. We'd like to see that at least get to about half. We have sent invites to everyone, so encourage your friends, if you have any that has school-age children, to look out for that email. If they didn't receive it, please contact us at the transportation department, we will resend that invite. But so far, so good. It has had some blips, but we've not been able to go to Stop Finder and not have a resolve within 24 hours for any issue that we've experienced. So again, I encourage anyone, if anything's happening weird or not functioning on the app, contact me or Joey Lawrence, and we will get that ticket placed and get that resolved quickly. And the last thing I want to talk about, transportation. Mr. Lawrence is a certified trainer, that's what has enabled us to get these two drivers on the road rather quickly. One driver already had their CDL, and actually, they were a former driver, they came back to us, which is always good to see. The other driver had nothing, so, you know, we started from scratch and trained up. That ability to do that in-house and not have to go to another division is a time saver and a cost saver for us. So I'm glad to have him on staff with that certification. All right, so to the really fun stuff, all the facility improvements. This is the stuff that, again, I thank the city council and the school board for approving. All these things were either purchased with CIP funds, caregiver funds, or somewhere grant-funded, and I'll get to that in a minute. But the pictures that I've highlighted here, if you can see the upper-left quadrant there, that's the rooftop of the high school. This illustrates two things. One, the new units on the rooftop, the doozers and the rooftop units that supply some of the fresh air. And also, you can see the roof that we'll be working on there, hopefully this summer to get across the finish line that needs in repair. So that's a kind of a project in a project, but once that, both of those get finished up, the HVAC is running flawlessly, couldn't be more happy with that one, but once we get the new roof, I'm really excited to see the efficiencies that that HVAC system is actually providing. So to be continued, but I will be pleased to see those results. Already talked about the buses. The division city and school system phone replacement system is going to be happening, hopefully over Christmas break. We've been meeting with the company IPC that won that RFP weekly. They are definitely going to work already, getting everything ordered and a plan with us to get that implemented. The Pecosin Elementary School floor, you see that in the lower right-hand quadrant, very beautiful floor. If you've not seen that yet, please do go and check that out. And we did just finish the middle school gym floor for unfortunately the second time in two years, but that is open now for use. Students should be able to utilize that today. I walked on it Friday with socks on just to make sure everything was good. It looks beautiful as well, so very pleased with that project. Upper right-hand quadrant, you can see the two things, actually. One is the exterior painting we did at the elementary school, that dark gray horizontal paneling. It was getting very splotchy, very faded. We refreshed that, we painted the parking lot there, and then the tent that we added to the media center's windows, big window panes there, has really helped reduce glare, reduce heat, and it's a security measure. You can't really see in, but you can see out, and it's a lot better on sunny days. So I think it's a cool look. Again, if you haven't checked it out, go about sunset or sunrise, it's very beautiful reflections off the sky there. Courtyards there in the lower-left quadrant, you've seen it some in the videos that Ms. I'd showed, but if you weren't there before, the renovation, they did a beautiful job, but the drainage just wasn't like what it should be. We were losing a lot of money, a lot of mulch, it was clogging drains, it was kind of a mess in there. So we went redesigned it, add some artificial turf, a lot of people were like when you put in the hole for the putting green, which you could, I mean, it's that nice. But it really fixed that problem for drainage, and the upkeep is minimal now. They even sprayed this product on the mulch, it kind of keeps it in place, so we'll be able to use that mulch, you know, longer without having to get it replaced. So very beautiful spaces on both sides. But again, thank you, I'm not going to go into all that, but there's been a lot of projects we've done in this past year, thanks to all the approval from these people sitting in front of me, so we really greatly thank you and your continued support. All right, so on to safety. We have been awarded some school security equipment grants from VDOE. The two years I've worked here and even before me, we continuously apply for this grant, and basically, it's a need-based thing, but it's highly competitive. You get points for certain needs you have, and of course, filling out the grant correctly. So we have been awarded a lot of money here the last couple of years and being able to purchase some pretty cool stuff. But the way that works is it is a reimbursement grant. It goes back to a certain date that you could have previously bought stuff, up to, you know, the current year at a certain date, you have to purchase it by and get it installed. So through this, we've been able to get some of the Open Gate weapon detection systems. You see that, kind of that bottom-left photo there, the columns? And it's not just a metal detection system. If you've not really read up on these, they're used state, you know, through the nation and schools, very popular brand there, but it actually works off the signatures that weapons produce, shape, size, the certain metals and everything. So it's not just a metal detector, it actually seeks out the shapes and different signatures that weapons actually produce. We've tested this a couple of times in the schools. We ran it actually the year before last with the set that we got for the high school. It works flawlessly, we can set these things up in minutes, they're very mobile, and they work. I even had the SRO go through with his goodies on and off, nailed him every time. So very, very effective. If you read up on some of the neighboring divisions that have been catching some weapons, these are the systems they're using, and it works as designed. So very, very, you know, excited to get these up and running in both our high school and middle school soon. We also got the evacuation chairs, which those go in their middle and elementary school just for our students or staff that might not be able to make it down the steps in case the elevators can't be utilized in emergency situation. And I think it goes to the Pecosin Fire Department, they came and demonstrated, I was a guinea pig on one, I got to ride down some steps. But they try to, they train their staff and they demonstrate how to use these evac chairs. And it allows anyone to get safely down the steps and all the way out to a safe location that has wheels. So very good additions there. The elementary school got an upgraded fire alarm system, totally digital, definitely brings us into the better century of technology, is adaptable, so if we want to add on these features later, it's definitely capable of doing that, and it's more accurate. And so far, with all the drills and everything, it's working really, really well. And then last but not least, you see a picture there of a bunch of, or one security camera, we've put tons of upgrades to our surveillance cameras. Josh Matavoe and his IT team have done a great job finding some, you know, basically blind spots that we've had, or cameras that just need to be repositioned or upgraded. So we've spent a lot of time and some funds there to upgrade those for security reasons. All right, the indoor badge readers, some staff had expressed interest in these, and principals did a really good job of identifying some interior doors that were frequently used by multiple staff members. So if you think about security, you never want to leave a door unlocked while the building's occupied by students. So passing out a lot of keys and hoping everybody knows which key, and especially in a moment of emergency, is a scary situation to be in. So with these door badge readers, staff can just utilize that badge to get quick access, and we can also code it just for certain people to have access to those rooms that need it. So it definitely adds a layer of security for us. Those were just finished this week. We did some upgraded radios, stop-the-bleed kits, if you've not seen those, that was a state requirement, but it's a great idea. It's just a bag full of goodies that would help someone stop anyone from a bleed-out, basically. There's tourniquets, different, you know, materials in there to help them. And then I've already talked about the alarms, so that's good. And that's all my presentation, I'll turn it over to Ms. Tracy Spence.
Good evening, members of city council, school board, and community members. For fiscal year '25, for the year-end review, the unrestricted revenues exceeded unrestricted expenditures by $1.6 million for that fiscal year '25. The surplus is largely attributable to staffing vacancies unsealed during the fiscal year, which resulted in lower personnel cost than originally budgeted. In alignment with fiscal policy and planning for continuity of services, a formal request to carry over the fiscal year '25 excess funds will be presented to the school board at its upcoming meeting. The carryover will support strategic priorities and operational needs in the current fiscal year. So at this time, if you have any questions for any member of the leadership team, we'll be glad to have them now.
Any questions at all?
Sure.
Keith?
When the test scores came up, it showed, obviously marked, anybody can notice it, dip for the history, but I also noticed it wasn't just for Pecosin, it was everybody. Was there something, did something change, like did the test change or instruction change or something like that?
For this past spring, the standards were still the same as previously tested, and there was no test change other than field tests, which happens every year. This year, however, though, we will have new standards and increased rigor in the assessments. But there is nothing from the state level that changed on their end.
Everybody just kind of tanked the history test or something?
There are years where sometimes different forms of the test can be more challenging than other forms that they put out, and there is sometimes a cycle for that. In addition to other subjects having changes, it can influence history and social studies. So if math and language arts standards were all revised and tested last year, and so sometimes those changes may impact other subjects as well as teachers are implementing those new standards.
Yeah, and if I could just weigh in and clarify, there were new standards in math and reading. I think what you were referring to was the social studies.
Right, there was no new standards for history, but there was new standards in math.
And so what happens often, especially in our K-5 classrooms, when there are new standards in math and language arts, the emphasis and the focus naturally go there. And there was a lot, it was a heavy lift for two back-to-back primary subject areas in the K-5 with new curriculum, new resources, new standards. And so in my experience, when you see that happen, you almost always see a dip in the other two areas or area that is not new. And so we have all of our schools do a school improvement plan every year, and there are mechanisms in place now to address that, make sure we are affording the time and resources and attention to all subject areas now that we have overcome the new standards and learned and trained. The Virginia Literacy Act, which is a massive undertaking, has significant lift in the English language arts area, K-8 really, and there was a lot of training, multiple training sessions for all of our teachers. So a lot of that was new through the science of reading and a lot of work there. So we expected a slight dip in social studies, and as you saw it, it happened around the state. We were disappointed in that area, but we feel pretty confident we'll be back up in where we ought to be this coming year.
Thank you, Keith. Mr. Freeman?
Yeah, I have a general comment and then a question from Ms. I'd. Generally, because you were talking about having 100% academic slots filled, that's because of the work, in my opinion, the work environment that y'all have created makes it really good to want to work here and keep that up. My questions were, have we had anyone graduate with an AA from our high school?
We have had students graduate with an associate's degree, or is that what you're speaking of? I'm sorry, AA? Just make sure I got the right.
And we, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Should I mention, though, that those students did so on their own, whereas this is now funded by Pecosin City Public Schools, fully funded, including textbooks and fees, and transportation is being provided.
Okay. On the AP classes, do we do a bunch of those in-house, or are they all done down at New Horizons campus?
We do all of our classes for AP in-house.
Oh, really?
And we fully fund that as well, which is new. Last school year was our first year paying for the assessments, and we've had an increased enrollment since doing that as well, with quite a bit of students taking AP classes with us funding that AP exam.
That's great. That's all my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Keith?
Yeah, back to me. When you talked about the readiness based upon attendance, you talked about had greater emphasis appears to be based on age. There's 10% for the K-5, and then 20%.
Is it this slide?
Yeah, 10% readiness, then 20% readiness, and then 35% readiness. So there's more emphasis on attending school in high school, which is definitely important, but it seems like it should be important for all grade levels.
It is, but also the graduation rate is applied in high school for readiness, that's included in that category as well, as well as the Ready for Life 3E, which is enrollment, enlistment, or employment is also included in that category in high school. So it becomes a little bit heftier as we're preparing them to leave us. Was that your question?
Well, it's just the fact that it goes from 10 to 20 to 35.
Yes, yes.
Which, again, it's more important that the high schoolers are in class. If, no offense to the first-grade teachers, first grader misses a day as versus high schooler missing a day.
Sure.
Yeah, just to clarify a bit, readiness, the definition of what that means is different in all three levels. Attendance is the readiness piece for elementary, whereas middle school and high school, then they add another layer of readiness in addition to attendance. So actually, the attendance piece, I believe, actually, if I'm correct on this, is about the same throughout all three levels. But when you get to high school, readiness includes 10% attendance, and then the three Es, for example, is included in readiness formula, which is enrollment, enlistment, and.
Employment.
Employment. And there's a variety of measures, we're just all wrapping our brain around this, this is all brand-new. Something that I fully support and our team does is some really good standards in here that we're measuring our students on their participation in these programs. Some of them we have in place, most of them we have in place, but we continue to grow these. And one of those is our College Now program, which checks that box, so to speak, for encouraging more of our kids to be involved in those three E areas, and will count toward that, again, a very sizable, as you noted, 35% of the formula is, are you ready for what's coming beyond high school?
And they prepare that, you see in middle school, it goes up to 20%, and that not only includes chronic absenteeism and the five Cs, but also advanced coursework, specifically in the area of math for now. Are we offering our students the opportunity, those who are ready for advanced coursework, for example, taking algebra, which is a ninth-grade, typically ninth-grade course, a lot of our students are now able to take that in seventh grade, two years ahead, so, and then bringing down geometry, so that they're coming to high school with advanced coursework if they are ready.
Can follow up on what you'd said about with regard to the dual enrollment students with the hefty increase from last year of 130 to 230, or something like that? Have you gotten any feedback on whether those courses that they take are transferable or not?
Oh, yes.
Now, in Virginia, they're going to be, but not everybody attends school or college in Virginia.
Well, these courses are transferable, so the passport and the UCGS are confirmed transferable through the Community College Network. And the associate's degree is also transferable within Virginia. There are going to be a few classes, depending on student's interests, that they may take, or should I say their degrees, if they're going to pursue post an associate's degree, that their university or college may say, well, we want you to take that in-house. And our associate's degree is of social science, so this may not fit every student. For example, if you do want to be a pilot, this may not be the best path for you because you would want something, not a social science degree. And so students get to make the choice, is this associate's degree the best path for you, or continuing to pursue the governor's school or the CTE, which also still offers dual enrollment, more in a science track if that's appropriate for them. So students definitely have to sit with their school counselors and their parents and kind of have an idea of where they want to go to select the courses that would best benefit them.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
The weapons detection systems, those are not online yet, is that correct? Do they?
We have written them this year in one of our school, our primary school, but we are meeting with the safety committee that meets monthly. That actually is, the meeting's tomorrow, and we're making that rotation schedule there and training everybody up.
Those are, you said they'll be in the middle school and the high school?
Correct.
And rotate elsewhere?
Yep. Through the year, we'll be rotating these to make sure that everyone is, you know, comfortable with the usage, yep.
And have you, you haven't noticed any slowdowns, they haven't caused any issues so far? They just go right through?
Yeah, so, you know, with any new system, you're putting students, you know, teens or younger in. The first couple of times, it's just, you know, the uniqueness of it, you know, we say, hey, it's like Busch Gardens or an airport, you know, you just go through. But as they get used to it, it'll get cleaner and cleaner. So, and there are items that can set it off just because of their shape, but once the students learn what they can and can't bring through it, then it gets a lot quicker.
And another question, the College Now, are we in our second cohort or are we still in the first?
This is the first year, it fully launched this fall, so this is our first cohort of students. And we have a small cohort going on campus. We are lucky that we have teachers certified in different courses to remain on campus, and we're hoping to grow that. Not that going on campus is a great experience, but the more we can keep them here with transportation and scheduling, it's better for us and to retain, you know, high-quality staff. So this is just our first cohort.
Any other questions from council members? Hyde, Mr. Roberts, and Ms. Spence, thank you so much. Mr. Tillot, Dr. Burbage, did y'all have anything else to add?
Just one final thing, I would be remiss if I didn't, again, thank you all for the work that you do. This is not my first rodeo. Been in this business a long time and have never worked, I thought I lived in paradise before, but I have never worked with a group of people who are more concerned with the well-being of our children than this group. And I mean that seriously, as I look around the table, everybody's here for the right reason, and it's to make all of our kids and families in PCOS and the best they can be. And I really appreciate it. It's fun to go to work every day when you know you're kind of rowing in the same direction, and I feel that, and I can't thank you enough. I know it's not easy when we get, we're getting ready to get into budget season, and we're meeting with Randy on Monday. He's going to tell us all the money he's going to give us. He gave him that, we're getting, it's a good start. But it really is, I know it's not easy work to divide that pie up and when everybody wants a larger piece, but I can't tell you how much we really appreciate it. And the proof is in the pudding, we can do this work simply because we do it together, and everybody makes it a priority, and I, again, can't thank you enough.
Well said, Mr. Tillot, appreciate your comments. Dr. Burbage, did you have anything to comment on?
No, just, we're slowly easing towards the budget season, so, you know, just, buddy, be prepared.
Thank y'all very much for the presentation, very insightful, enjoyable, and it had an element of entertainment as well, so that's always good. One of the things I picked up on in the beginning that I'd like to comment, y'all emphasizing the collaborative approach even in the lowest grade levels, and that's one thing we emphasize greatly at the council level, staff, school board, and staff and school board office. Like I said earlier, that's one of the reasons why we like to have these joint work sessions. Cannot overemphasize the value of the good working relationship, leaning on each other, none of us know it all, none of us have all the answers, and none of us are always right. But by the grace of God, all of us working together, the outcome is pretty good. And while I'm at it, I'd also like to thank our staff for coming in and setting the room up for us, so they always go out of their way to take good care of us as well. And the timing is just about perfect for the presentation. So thank y'all again for being here, and we look forward to continuing working together. So thanks so much.
And David, may I make a comment, please?
Yes, sir. I'd like to thank every one of our school board members for being here and being presented. Each one of you were selected when you were appointed because you were the best candidate when you were interviewed, okay? Because school system is the most important thing that we have in our city, okay? The school board is our most important board and commission. And so the people sitting here are ones who are most important to us, and you're careful to bring, okay? There are some school systems who have gone to elected positions, and some of the school systems had an election where no one volunteered for, okay? So we believe we're doing the right thing, we obviously have the right people, and thank you all for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Southall. If there's nothing else, we will adjourn the work session and get ready for the regular session meeting. Thanks again. Good evening, welcome to all. This PCOS and City Council meeting is called to order. Good to see everybody here tonight, it's always nice to have a big crowd, and we'll have a presentation in just a few minutes in honor of Veterans Day. Now, we have several veterans here with us tonight, and certainly want to honor the Moving on to item B on the agenda, the invocation and pledge of allegiance, which will be led tonight, Councilman Kerry Freeman.
Pray with me, please. Dear Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to meet as an elected council. Please guide us and direct us. Help us work together with respect and understanding, striving for the common good of our city. We ask you to bless our military, especially those deployed, and our first responders who serve our city. In your name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Item C on our agenda is for special presentations, but we have three tonight. The first is related to Veterans Day, and we're very pleased and honored to have with us tonight, Mr. Kevin Cobethan. Kevin is a post commander here at Holly Moore Post 273 of the American Legion, and we're equally pleased and honored to have with us tonight, Ms. Becky Bradshaw Morrison. She's a PCOS and girl and a retired history teacher right here at PCOS and High School, where she spent her entire career. So they're going to collaborate on this presentation, so the floor is y'all's.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor Hux and city council members, members of the public. Thanks for asking me to be here this evening. I'm just going to say a few words about tomorrow's Veterans Day ceremony and then pass it over to Ms. Becky. So tomorrow, we'll gather in solemn recognition of Veterans Day, a day set aside to honor the men and women who have worn the uniform of the United States of America. We come together to not only remember their service, but to reaffirm our nation's enduring commitment to those who have defended its freedom. From the fields of Europe to the jungles of Vietnam, from the deserts of the Middle East to missions across the globe, American service members have stood watch in defense of liberty. They have answered the call of duty with courage, devotion, and unshakable sense of purpose. Each veteran's story is unique, yet all share a common thread, willingness to sacrifice for the greater good. Their service reflects the highest ideals upon the nation it was founded, honor, duty, and the love of country. We recognize the cost of freedom is not borne in abstract, it is carried in the hearts of those who have served in the quiet strength of their families. It is seen in the empty chair at the dinner table, the long months of deployments, and the lifelong memories of battles fought and commemorized last, lost. Today, we express our deepest gratitude to all who have served, past and present. Yet gratitude alone is not enough, our duty as citizens to ensure that our veterans receive the care, respect, and opportunities they have earned, who much strive to build a nation worthy of their sacrifice, one that supports them in peace and steadfastly as they have defended us in war. To our veterans here tonight, and to those who cannot be with us, we honor your service, we recognize your sacrifice and thank you for safeguarding the freedoms we cherish. May this day remind us that liberty endures not by chance, but by the courage and commitment of those who stand ready to defend it. On behalf of a grateful nation, we say thank you to all veterans. Your service will never be forgotten, and your legacy will forever guide the United States. May God bless our veterans, their families, and God bless the United States of America. So please, folks, come out tomorrow, 11 o'clock. It's going to be a little chilly, but we'll get through it, but it's a great service and appreciate you coming out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate you being with us tonight.
Hi, like the mayor said, my name is Becky Morrison. I taught U.S. History at PCOS and High School proudly for 31 years, retired last year. And I started the PCOS and Veterans Project in 2017. I was at a teachers' conference in DC with teachers from all over the country, and we were immersed in World War II, it was wonderful. Shout out to Friends of the World War II Memorial, Holly Rotundi is the director. And each teacher was given a challenge to go back to their school and do a community service project with their school. And the winner got to come back the next year and present their project. And if you know anything about me, you know I'm very, very competitive. So I was like, I don't know what those jokers are doing, but I'm a win. So on my three-and-a-half-hour train ride home, the PCOS and Veterans Project was born. And it sort of grew legs with every little aspect of it, and I will show you a little bit about what we do. So the kids adopt veterans. So the kids adopt veterans and we bring them in. The first thing we do is interview day. And the kids interview their veterans. We have lunch. They end up playing games with them and just sort of spending the whole day together. Then at special events, every home football game, if you've been to a home football game since 2017, we have a veteran do the coin toss. And this has been so, I can't tell you how meaningful it has been to them. And the VHSL Referees Association actually voted to put in their budget now that our veterans, they pay for the coins and our veterans get to keep the coin, which is a special VHSL coin. I just thought they tossed a quarter, but it's a special coin. And they get to keep it. And it's so really meaningful for them. And so this is, and it's so cute. Like the football captains, you see, back a couple of years ago, they held hands, but now they link arms and they walk across the field. And all of the other players shake the veterans' hands, say thank you for your service. It's just been really, really cool. I've even had other coaches say, hey, how can I do this? How can I start this? So that would be fantastic. I had one veteran who went to Vietnam, came back and played baseball at Virginia Tech. So he wanted to throw out a first pitch at a baseball game. So I was like, great. So he did. And then Virginia Tech heard about it and had him come to one of their games and throw out a first pitch. So it's kind of snowballed to other places. So it's been, it's been really sweet. And the shirts that the veterans wear, I make them all myself. And so the front has a logo on it that says Pecosin Veterans Project and the back has their name. And then they get a number, they choose a number that's meaningful to them. And some of them say, well, you know, I joined the military in 1970, so I'm 70. I actually have one this year say 6'7". Okay, I did it. But so that's where the shirts come from. And I have to give a big shout out to my family. I get emotional because when we started this, I had no money. And so my family, my husband said, you know, we'll fund this ourselves. And so all the shirts, all the vinyl, all the stuff, we just did as a family. And my son was in my class and got to adopt a veteran. And my daughter was my, she was in college at the time that I started, and so she helped out. And now I'm proud to say she is a teacher at Goochlin High School and her veterans' project is bigger than mine. So it's wonderful. This is, if you know Mike Ship. And a couple of veterans say, you know, can my kid come out and do the coin toss? And I'm like, sure. It's meaningful to them, too. This is interview day. And the kid, it's so funny because at the beginning of the day, it's like the teenagers are like, oh, I've never really talked to old people outside my grandparents. And the older people are kind of like, eh. And by the end of the day, they're best buds. It's so, it's just marvelous to watch. And if anybody wants to come out next year and help and participate, that would be fantastic because it really is a transformative day. We always take the veterans to DC and we tour the memorials. That is my biggest expense because if you don't know, one charter bus for one day to DC is $3,500. And so I've had really, like Tabernacle has, church has sent me, given me money in the past, the ladies auxiliary from the VFW, different places. But it does cost to, you know, keep these things going. So if anybody has a business or, you know, any grants that I can write, I would be loved, hook me up. This is so cute. And again, they didn't know each other at the beginning of this day. And some of them still keep in contact with their veterans. And I've had veterans say, you know, can, you know, if you know, a ticket to Pecosin High School's graduation is very coveted. And because, you know, each graduate only gets so many. But I've had veterans say, can you give me a ticket because I want to see my kids graduate? And so that's pretty fun, too. This in particular, the lady on the right, her name is LaDon Kramer. And she was a colonel during the Vietnam War. She was a nurse. And this day, she was so proud to be able to take her girls to the Vietnam Women's Memorial and show them that. And then on the left here is Judge Smith and Judge Jake Smith, and he had never visited the Wall until this day. And he had lost two of his guys on a swift boat in an attack in Vietnam. And so we found their names, his girls helped him find their names, and we etched them. And he's crying, the kids are crying, I'm crying. And it was really, really meaningful. And his daughters contact me every year and be like, hey, Dad wants to do it again. I'm like, every year? Come on, Judge Smith, he's my, he's a sweetheart. This is Mr. Spielberger. He was really, he was a WWII veteran and he was, he was really sweet with his kids, too. There's General Dick Abel on the left there. And on homecoming, and if you've been to the Homecoming Parade the last several years, you've seen Mr. Edward Holloway. I have to give him a shout out. He always gives, gets the cars together to drive the veterans in the Homecoming Parade, which is very sweet of him to do that. And then the night of the Homecoming Game, all of my veterans come and stand with the band to do the National Anthem. There's Mr. Howard who threw out the pitch at a baseball game. I believe this is a brunch, at the end of the school year, one year the kids said, we want to have a brunch. And so, and this is Ellie Deefenworth who adopted her grandfather on the right. And he, she had, he had never talked to her about his service, ever. And he came to me and he said, thank you, because I never would have talked to my granddaughter about this. And so that, that's been really sweet, too, the family connections that we've had. And Mr. Don Ward, if you know him, he's very big into wrestling. So he wanted to, I wanted to recognize him at a wrestling match. So we, we did that. Oh, and he, I don't know, do they do a coin toss at a volleyball game? Ellie played volleyball and he was recognized at a volleyball game. Oh, yeah, I made the little guy a shirt, too, so he could match his stats. And that's her son. She was recognized at a football game and that's her son that was a player. And last weekend, it's not in the slideshow, I had Carter Jones, who is one of our players, his grandfather did the coin toss. And Carter is a captain on the team, so he got to walk out with his grandson, so that was really sweet. And that's my daughter. So, there you go. So thank you for asking me to be here today. And do you have any questions for me?
Ms. Freeman?
I just have a quick comment. Very good program that she ran and I was one of her veterans once upon a time and really enjoyed it, so thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Kevin and Becky, we really appreciate y'all's contributions to the presentation tonight, even better than expected. And this goes along with the presentation we did in honor of Memorial Day earlier this year. And we intend to make this an annual tradition on Memorial Day as well as Veterans Day. And just a shout out to Holloway American Legion, Post 273. They say imitation is the sincerest form of flattery, so we've always been impressed by the presentations y'all do and ceremonies for Memorial Day and Veterans Day. So we're imitating y'all. Thank you for your example there. Becky, thanks again. And also wanted to recognize the veterans that we have serving on council. Mr. Freeman, of course, a retired Air Force officer. Flew B-52s over North Vietnam when I was sitting in my parents' home in diapers and safety and comfort. And this gentleman was dodging Sams over North Vietnam. So he's a role model of mine. I'm young enough to be his son and appreciate him being here. And then we have another veteran over here. I'm young enough to be his younger brother. But he's a role model as well. Councilman Keith Fieh, he's a graduate of the Air Force Academy. So he's one of the cream of the crop nationwide. Not easy to get into, of course, and certainly an accomplishment to get, to get through it, exactly. And Keith is also a pilot that flew all over the world. I think you were in Desert Storm, I believe?
Nope, never made there. I did fly over Grenada.
Well, you were there and that's one more day than most of us. So thank y'all for that. And we will now move on to our next presentation. We have another Pecosin girl with us tonight, Ms. Leslie Furman Roberts. She's actually a descendant of the namesake of Messick Point. So that's, that's pretty cool. So welcome, Leslie. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good to chat you.
Well, you're welcome. And Leslie's going to give us a presentation on our audit. And she's also a partner with Brown Edwards &amp; Company. So with that, Leslie, the floor is yours.
Well, this won't be as exciting as the Veterans Project, but probably still crucial to the city.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Just, I'm just going to go through some highlights of the audit like I do, I have in the past. Overall, the audit went very well. Tanya, Tara, and Tracy were very helpful. I don't know if you guys know, but this audit is not due until December 15th. And so I'm standing in front of you over a month early. So that's just, you know, a bit, really big deal. This year, we did have a new GASP, a new governmental standard that needs to be implemented. So you'll see that throughout the paperwork and you'll see it on our report and everywhere else. But basically, it was on compensated absences and you're required to look at it a little bit differently. And it was effective for the beginning of this year. And so actually, you had to do a restatement to increase your liability by, for the city, it was about 1.2 million. And for the school board, it was about, well, the city was about 1.5 million, school board 1.2 million. So that hit your beginning balance. And so that was implemented and schools and the city worked that implementation up. We just audited it. And they did a great job of implementing. The first part of your financial statements, you guys know, it's really long. And so I'm just going to point out some of the highlights. The very first part that I want to point out is the independent auditor's report. It's on page 1 through 4. And this is kind of the bottom line, where are we able to come in here, look at your books and say that they present fairly, your activities, your balances, and what went on for the city for the year? And I report again, once again this year, that you have a clean audit report, an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance we can give you as an external auditor. So again, the only thing that's unusual about this report, it does, it does point out that GASP implementation, that it's under the heading Change in Accounting Principle. So you'll see that on there. And that's just pointing you to note 19, where it talks about the restatement that I just told you about. There's another part of the financial statements. It's a letter of transmittal. And as a citizen, I really like reading that because it gives like some background, talks about what's, what went on during the year. It provides just kind of what's going on, like it gives the legacy project updates and tells you how many homes and all that stuff. I think that's really, that's good information for a citizen. Also, the MDNA, which is another part that comes at the beginning of the financials, is, stands for Management's Discussion and Analysis. That's a great high level, like comparative reporting that gives, that talks about things that happened last year and this year and what changed. And I think, you know, when you're reading through this, it's really kind of hard to read the financial statements in the format that they're required to be in. And this kind of gives you information that really kind of tones it down so you can kind of say, well, what really happened? And so I really would recommend if you read any part of that, that you read the letter of transmittal and the MDNA, because it's really good highlights. The basic financial statements, the city had a good year this year. Statement and net position is like the balance sheet where you have your assets, your liabilities, and what's left over is net position. And the city ended the year with a net position of about 68.5 million. Of that, about 41.7% was, 41.7 million was a net investment in capital assets, which, you know, isn't surprising. You've got a lot of infrastructure here. But you did have unrestricted net assets of about 26.4 million, which is approximately 39%. So that's really good. So the end is, you have some unrestricted net position, so the city can use that for what the city needs. And that's good to see. The other basic financial statement that I wanted to talk a little bit about is the statement of activities. And the city once again had a good year, a positive change in net position of approximately 11.8 million. And that's a 21% increase over the prior year. So that's good to see that you have the positive change. The notes to the financials are very long. They go from page 19 to 70 and they go into more detail about the balances and some of the transactions. I'm not going to go into those. I'm just going to tell you those are there and I'll give you more detail. The required supplementary information is after the notes. And that does have some information that's probably really good to look at. It's the budget versus actual schedules that will show you, you know, how we did on revenue side and expense side versus actual. So that is some good reading. The supplementary information, that breaks down the component unit, so that gives the school board's detail broken out from the city. And so that's good to look at. The next section is the statistical section. And as a citizen, I like to look at that, too. And that gives you like a 10-year comparison of different data. And shows where the city was 10 years ago, where they are now, and it gives like statistics on the number of employees, it looks at net position, and again, some interesting information. At the very end is another report that's required for our audit, and it's a report over financial reporting. And so if we had any issues with the way they handled their job and they, or any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, they would be in that letter. We don't have any of those. That's another kind of clean opinion. And so that's something to be proud of. And then there's another part of that letter that talks about compliance with state code. And we look at stuff like conflicts of interest, whether you turn in your forms in time, on time, and you have no conflicts, or, and budget and appropriation laws and things like that. And we did not have any compliance issues either to report in that report. One thing that we normally do have as part of that financial statement is your single audit report, which is your report over compliance with federal expenditures. And that's going to be issued at a later date because the government has not issued the supplement that we follow to do those audits. We've already done the audit. We don't, we haven't had any issues so far. But we don't know that they won't change some of the compliance requirements that we need to audit. And so until they issue it, and right now with the shutdown, we don't know when they're going to issue it. So we went ahead and issued the financial statements without that. But that will be issued at a later date. But I can tell you, we don't have any findings or issues at this point. We just can't issue it without the government guidance being fine. There's another letter that you guys have in there. It's a separate letter that's just stapled. This is like what we call the management letter. It's basically any, anything we're required to tell you as part of the audit. A lot of it's spoiler play. One thing I will point out is my contact information is in there. And you can contact me anytime during the year and I'll answer your questions. And we talked to Tara and Tanya throughout the year if things come up. But you're really welcome to reach out. Also Danielle Nicolason, her contact information is in there. And full disclosure, I'm in my step retirement right now. And so Danielle is actually your audit partner this year. And I did the second review this year. So Danielle will be taking over your account going forward. I retire officially 5/31/27, but I'm not counting down days. But anyway, Danielle's contact information is in there as well. And your engagement manager, Katie Bab, her contact information is in there. Of course, this letter has information about that New GASP. It's all over the place, you know, that you implemented the New GASP. And it talks about significant es-. And it talks about significant estimates because in any financials, you have some things that are estimates, like capital assets. You don't know how long they're going to last till you estimate their life. And there's some estimates embodied in your lease computations. And of course, there's estimates in that compensated absences computation that we redid under the New GASP. Or we re-audited and they redid under the New GASP. So there's some estimates that it points out. If we had any difficulties during the audit or any disagreements with management, that would be in this letter as well. There were none, of course. I like to tell you all the time, if that was the case, we'd be reaching out to you much earlier. But we haven't had any issues in the tenure that we've done your audit. And there were none this year. So there's some attachments to that letter. One of them is the rep letter. It's with the management signs at the end of the engagement, just basically saying that they've been forthcoming with all the information, a kind of a hold harmless letter. That's in there. Any past adjustments, like small adjustments that we didn't post, that's in there as well. And any audit adjustments we posted are in there. All of those relate to things that weren't available prior to our starting the audit that management made available to us. So those aren't true audit adjustments. They're more like late adjustments made during the audit. Also, there's another section at the very end that talks about New Gaspys coming up. So if you're interested in that, it's like probably more detail than you want. But as these New Gaspys come up, we are very collaborative with management. We offer training. We offer an eight-hour training that they can come to virtually or they can attend virtually or in person. And they take advantage of that quite a bit. But that's really all I have. It was a very good audit. The opinions were clean. The letter was pretty much boilerplate with the exception of the implementation. And the implementation went fine. And again, I want to point out, you're really early. This is the first presentation we've made to a municipality. So that's, I'm proud of that as a citizen, that you guys are very progressive and get this done quickly. And we'll be back in touch. The single audit will probably just be given to you. That doesn't have to be presented. So you'll probably just get that. But again, I don't anticipate any findings from that. Any questions? Well, I thank you for choosing us to do your, to provide audit services.
Well, our compliments, Leslie. Excellent presentation. Pleasure working with y'all as always. Admire what you do. It takes a very special intellect to be an accountant. And I know we have several of them in the room tonight. So thank you so much for your contributions and we're grateful for another year with a clean audit. It's certainly no surprise, reflects so well on our staff. And one thing that I can comment on is the depth we have, especially when it comes to financing. And we have so many different sets of eyes looking at our finances, so many different perspectives, starting with our city manager, although he's not a CPA. Finance is his area of expertise. Then we have our assistant city manager, who's also a CPA. And as you know, our former director of finance. Of course, we have our current director of finance, Ms. Tara Woodruff, and her entire staff that are so well-versed. So we feel like things are in great hands. All this helps contribute to our AAA bond rating that we're so thankful for. And that is a rarity, especially among a small bedroom community such as ours. And it also speaks to the efficiency. And we strive for that first and foremost, to ensure that the taxpayers' dollars are handled with the best stewardship possible. And you and your organization help us to do that. So thank you so much, Leslie. Appreciate you being with us tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. We are certainly grateful for another clean audit again this year. So congratulations to all involved that contribute to that. And our next presentation is by our assistant city manager, Ms. Tanya O'Connell, related to the Pecosa Holiday Shop &amp; Dine.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city manager. I will have to start off by saying, like Becky, I'm very competitive. And though I never got the annual audit to y'all in November, I'm proud to say at least I have a team member that did that. From that standpoint, I did not win that race, but at least I won the victory overall by coming early. So Tara, thank you for getting this across the finish line as I always hope to. But no, tonight, I'm talking about an exciting event. We have our shop and dine that we like to bring to our residents. Typical of us, November 17th through December 5th, we would like our residents to shop local, spend local. If they take and spend over $150, two receipts from two restaurants, one receipt from a retailer, it can be Pecosa Gifts, Pep Pecosa, Early Birds, Shining Light, Staying Glass. And of course, we have our Pecosa Holiday Art Gallery that qualifies as well. If you can see in the corner, we have a special ornament that has the 50th anniversary for Pecosa. We hope that this takes seed. So each year, we can offer a different ornament for our residents to collect. So we're very excited to offer this. Keep your receipts, Leslie.
I have to.
Okay.
I could not bring this.
Come spend, come see the city manager's office during that time period. We'll accept up until December 8th with your receipts and we hope to see you. Any questions of council? Now, this is the exciting thing. Perfect. Thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you, Tanya. Appreciate that. So that concludes our three presentations, all of which were excellent. And thanks so much for all the effort that went into that. And we will move on now to item D, Audience for Visitors. This time, we will open the floor for a public comment related to the city. And I have one speaker card. This is from Mr. Joe Rapples. Business, provided we pass the CUP will be at 300 City Hall Avenue. So Mr. Rapples, you could also please share your home address just for the record?
Yeah, 1 John Point Lane, Pecosa, 300 City Hall Avenue.
Sure. Very good. Welcome, Mr. Rapples.
Good evening, council members and city staff. First of all, I would like to express my sincere appreciation for all the work that everyone has done for this project. I think it was almost a year ago that we approached the council and we had the first CUP meeting about it. So it's gone a long way. We've made a lot of adjustments and I think we finally see eye to eye on pretty much everything, which is, it's great that, unfortunate enough to be in a city that supports this kind of mission. I'd like to show my appreciation to all of you. And it's for Mr. Pedala, back here somewhere, who I'd like to mention, too, because it's been a lot of work. Also, I would like to thank all the veterans in this room. I know here in the council, we have two. In the floor, we have a bunch of them as well. So Veterans Day coming up tomorrow. Again, this service for our country, this is what we do. I wanted to talk about why, why I came up with the vision for Islander Outdoors in the shooting range and talk about some of the flying portion of it, because I think there's been some confusion with it in the past. Easy answer to it is because I'm passionate about it. I'm passionate about teaching people safety. It's teaching in general, sharing your knowledge with other people. I'm passionate about the outdoor and I'm passionate about the community, about the community. And the bonds that get created within the community when you have a place like this to come in and share good times together. Some of the earlier meetings, when we talked about flying and the paramotors, the paragliding, I got some weird looks. A lot of people are not familiar with it. But the paramotor part of the business is a way to share that love for aviation. I know here in this room, we have a couple aviators. And I want you to remember back to that very first time that you strapped on the airplane and you flew. The first time you lined up on the runway, pushed that power forward and you're going down the runway. What an amazing feeling. I bet you can still feel it. But all of that comes at a cost. Long nights at work, studying bullface procedures. It's a lot of work that people don't see. Quite frankly, a very select few in the United States Armed Forces get to become aviators. Very few people get to become pilots. With the paramotor portion of the business, we are extending that feeling to people that otherwise would not be able to do it. People that would not be able to afford flying. A paramotor is the cheapest way to learn how to fly and feel that incredible freedom of flight. And that's why we do it, because we're passionate. We have a great group here in the Antler Road area that really, really enjoys it. So I think we still have a little bit more discussion, maybe I would like to in the future, as to how maybe the city can help us expand our vision with the paramotor side of the business. And it's also more, we have a social side of it, whereas it's not just business. We're just a group of people to get together. So let's see. With that, I would like to, again, thank the council for taking this time to make the vote. We're committed to this. I just got the first tax bill for the land. So that shows our commitment. We bought the land. We want to build this. We're here for the city, me and my wife, Kristin. We're not going anywhere and we want to see this company fruition with your help. Again, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Rapples. Appreciate you being with us. Have any other speakers? We will close the floor and we move on to item E on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of the regular session of October 27th, 2025. Do we have a motion to that?
Don't move, Mr. Mayor. Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Kristy, call for a vote, please.
Councilman Fieh.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett.
Aye.
Councilwoman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Mayor Hux.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item F, Old Business. We have one topic. This is a resolution before us to approve or deny a conditional use permit application by Joe Rapples of Islander Outdoor of Virginia, LFC, for the operation of a multi-use facility to include an indoor gun range, gunsmithing, and firearm manufacturing, retail, and offices, classrooms to be operated at 300 City Hall Avenue, an approximate 2.42 acre parcel identified as tax map parcel 27-01-00-0092, Zoned Village Commercial. And we have with us tonight our principal planner, Mr. Thomas Canelo. And he's going to give us a presentation. So thank you, Thomas. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager, staff, and the public. I do have a brief presentation for you this evening on the consideration. Over the course of your conversations with the applicant, conditions made that he seek architectural review board approval. And the ARB considered the project September 4th, 2025. This is the conceptual, the elevation that was shown by the applicant. And then I'll say what you see overlaid by my very layman architecture skills. Those were conditions of approval of the architectural review board. The first is that the applicant must install vertical masonry as shown in the attachment. And that'll just continue the masonry you see on the bottom of the building through, I'll say, that second material set. The second condition of approval was that the loading door that was shown on the right side of the building must be placed on the south side, so for all intents and purposes, right around the corner, and it must not face City Hall Avenue. The third condition was that all siding must be cementitious. It's just a different materials siding, exactly what it sounds like, cement board. And that the approval of the architectural review board was just for phase one of the building only. And the architectural review board will have to review any addition or alteration to what's already been considered. You'll remember through conversations with the applicant and previous presentations that there is a second phase of the building for a second wing. And at that time, the applicant's prepared to move forward with it. The architectural review board will consider the elevation of that second phase at a separate Through your conversations, you also required a conceptual site plan to be presented. And what I've displayed has been presented by the applicant. You can see the orientation to City Hall Avenue. And you can see what is shown is the first phase, phase one of the building, which we've discussed in some length. And then that green area south of the main part of the building, that's where you could envision phase two would be constructed. Parking in the side and the rear of the building. And you can see running diagonally through the parking lot, that is the long range the applicant has discussed in quite a bit of detail previously. There have been two amendments to the conditions of approval, Mr. Mayor. And I won't read these word for words, the ones you've already reviewed, many of these carryover conditions. But the third condition of approval was one of much discussion. And it read previously that the applicant and owner shall convey a 20-foot portion of property for the purpose of a future city right-of-way along the northern property line of the subject property to provide a connection from City Hall Avenue to Alpha Street Extended. And then it goes on to say, the conveyance of the property shall only occur following city council approval of roadway extension to provide the applicant access and prior to the approval of a site development plan. That was a one option, basically only condition. But, Mr. Mayor, the amendment tonight provides an alternate to that condition. And that reads that the applicant may provide a 20-foot right-of-way perpetual non-exclusive easement, more or less for pedestrian, bicycle, emergency vehicle access through the property to connect City Hall Avenue to Alpha Street Extended. The fourth condition implied in the site plan ordinance, all traffic impacts shall be mitigated at the expense of the developer and the owner of the property as deemed necessary by the city manager. That's a requirement that was actually part of your zoning ordinance revisions you approved in November of 2024. The conditional use permit allows for uses specifically permitted or those as found in Section 11-2 of the city code, permitted uses in the Village Commercial District. It's important to note, this is a multi-use facility. So those things permitted by right in the VC district would also be permitted by right in the facility. Conditions six through 10 remain unchanged. And condition 11, that was a condition that compelled certain, I'll say, progress in the project. And given the length of time this has been considered, Mr. Mayor, the amendment moves some of those dates back, which compel the applicant to perform certain things. The first is that if a site development plan for phase one is not officially submitted to the city for review prior to December 31st to 26th, this permit shall become null and void. All that means is a professionally-prepared development plan must be submitted to staff. That doesn't necessarily mean approved, but that just means submitted for staff review. And the second amendment to that, forgive me, it's not underlined, but there was a condition there that required the CEO for phase one to be issued. And that has also been moved about six months to December 31st of 2028. If not done so, the permit will become null and void. The conditions 12 through 14 remain unchanged. And, Mr. Mayor, I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Thomas from council? Thomas, well done, my friend. Appreciate you being with us.
Yes, sir.
If I could elaborate just a little bit on condition number three? Yeah, there you go. Thank you. Thank you. I'd just like to provide some clarification. The perpetual non-exclusive easement identified in the amendment to condition number three does not require any physical conveyance of property from the applicant to the city. This easement is to ensure connectivity between City Hall Avenue and a future extension of Alpha Street. So, just wanted to buy clarification on that, make certain there was no misunderstanding. Thomas, thank you again. Well done.
Thank you, sir. If you have any questions, I'm available, as well as the applicant, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that. All right, council, we have a... Yes, ma'am?
So, um, emergency vehicles, pedestrians, bicyclists could go through the parking lot that's already there.
Well, as, as it reads, yes, ma'am?
That's what I was asking. Okay. Thank you. Clarify.
You're welcome. Well, I was, I was, she just had a question. That's okay. Uh, do we have a motion on a second?
Mr. Mayor, I propose a resolution to approve a conditional use permit application by Joe Raffles, IOVA LLC, for the operation of a multi-use facility to include an indoor gun range, gunsmithing, and firearm manufacturing, retail, and office, offices, classrooms to be operated at 300 City Hall Avenue and an approximate 2.4 acre parcel identified as tax map parcel 27-01-00-0092, zoned village commercial.
Thank you.
Yes. Just a question of clarification, just to make it perfectly clear. Um, that is with the conditions as presented? I'll just make sure.
And, and one, one clarification question for me. The, the, um, right of way, um, we're not requiring any specific property, okay? But if it's walking path, ever connected Alpha Street, where the people over Sayon Legacy want to walk to the shopping center, they'd be allowed to walk through that property. Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. Very good. Any other questions, comments? Kristy, call for vote, please.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
No.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunty?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to one.
Thank you, Kristy. Moving on to new business, we have one topic. Uh, this is a resolution making appointments to the Virginia Peninsula Public Service Authority, otherwise known as VIPSa. Uh, do we have a motion on a second?
Mr. Mayor, I propose a resolution appointing Ms. Tanya O'Connell and Mr. Randy Wheeler as alternate to the Virginia Peninsula Public Service Authority.
Second. Thank you. Uh, any questions or comments? Fine choices, I might add. Kristy, call for vote, please.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunty?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Kristy. And with that, we'll move on to item H on the agenda, comments of the city manager. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I would add before I read this couple of points that, uh, like you, I was really appreciative of the Veterans Day occasion. It went even better than we hoped for, and we had a high bar to begin with. Um, so, thank you to all involved in that. I just wanted to share a few things, uh, with the community, um, about business, businesses that are opening in our city or, in one case, in case reopened. Recently, many of us had the occasion to go to the reopening of TJ Sports Tavern. If you haven't been there, you should. It's considerably larger, considerably updated, and a really nice building. And it is open, even though they're working through, uh, the final, uh, changes to the parking lot, it is open now. Uh, soon, um, in the location that used to be a electrical, uh, company, their 306, uh, With Creek, will be WS Landscaping. Recently went through the architectural review board and got their approval. We'll also be welcoming, uh, in the next week, yeah, week from today, Sutton River Antiques on the top floor of the Moore Building, which is the same building where this year's holiday, um, shopping location is for the Art League. And then finally, uh, also approved by the architectural review recently, um, Planet Fitness, which is planning to open the location in the month of January in the former Farm Fresh, uh, location. Yeah, that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Randy. Appreciate that, and it just underscores how fortunate we are in this community. I mean, we can look around the world and, and see the issues that others have to deal with and trying to keep things in perspective. So often, uh, when we do that, our, our issues are, are pretty small. We've been richly blessed. Thank the good Lord for that, and, uh, gotta be the best stewards we can of all of our many blessings. So, we'll move on then to council directives. Janie?
Want to remind everyone who participates in the annual memory tree, this is not Christmas tree lighting, but the memory tree. It's always the first of December, um, over by, uh, Taylor Dental. Uh, that's where they have the tree. They've moved it back from the street, um, and have the tree, um, more on the parking lot side to facilitate those who've had trouble, um, navigating in the dark and, you know, with various modes of assistive technologies to get out there. Um, it's a lovely evening, and there's Christmas carols and... as well. Uh, donation is minimal. I believe it's the Exchange Club who helps out with that. Um, it used to be the Garden Club, but many of them have aged out, so the Exchange Club has taken up that mantle. My husband with the, uh, with St. Timothy's leads the service for that portion. So, come on out.
And, uh, if I can take just a minute, uh, Councilwoman Hubbard's husband that she just mentioned, uh, he's also a retired naval aviator, so it's just another military family, uh, and a very patriotic community. Angie?
Um, thank you to everybody for coming out. It is always great to see these seats filled, so thank you for your time to come out. Thomas Canelo, congratulations on your, um, election for the Commissioner of Revenue. You will be missed as planner, um, but you are moving on to some, uh, exciting, um, times as Commissioner of the Revenue, and I think that's all I have.
Angie? Keith?
Uh, yes. Uh, thanks in advance to Public Works, they're gonna be out tomorrow picking up trash despite the fact of the holiday. Um, and I think anybody that put stuff out today, appreciate that. Uh, also, the announcement that the Thursday is the, this month's mobile food pantry at MS Baptist Church, uh, distribution will be from 10 to 12. Um, anybody that wants to volunteer to help out, be there by 8:30. Uh, we're trying to make it a little bit special with all the uncertainty with government shutdown, SNAP benefits being restricted and like that. Don't know what we're gonna get from the food bank, but we're gonna try and do a pretty good job. For those that saw on most social media and also out here in the lobby, uh, for the last week or so, we've had a collection, uh, supplemented by the members of MS Baptist Church that we're trying to make it, even though it might be a little less food than normal, a little bit more special with some Thanksgiving, not turkeys, but turkey, stuffing, everything to go with it, to make it a little special this time. Usually get a good turnout from the recipients, but it's been a pretty good turnout from the volunteering as well.
Thank you, Keith. Appreciate your leadership and those efforts. Uh, just another example of, uh, of a servant leader, so, so thank you. Mr. Southall?
Uh, yeah. First, I'd like to thank everyone who came out here tonight and those watching at home for paying attention to the city government. Uh, I can't stress the importance of that. I want, we want to know that we have many boards and commissions that could always use applications, and I encourage everyone to apply. And, uh, a special thanks to, uh, American Legion and Becky for giving the presentation tonight, and, Miss Becky, um, we can't thank you enough for all the gifts you've given to this city and the school system. My kids and grandkids love you just like I do, okay? You've done an excellent job for the city, and thank you so much for it personally. And, um, Mr. Mayor, I want to tell you I love this city, okay? Um, and I want to give a special thanks to a building family who have a home on Darden Avenue, okay? For, for many people who haven't been to their Halloween extravagance, okay? They've done it for years. I've heard rumors that this may be their last year. I hope not, but they have done such a wonderful job celebrating the Halloween season, and the kids absolutely love it, okay? I, I make several passes by their every Halloween just to take a look at it. Um, and, and they topped it off this year by putting a sign out front after they took everything in, thanking the citizens for their special memories, okay? And they deserve a big thank you for that. They do. And, uh, if you walk around this city or drive around this city, I have a dog that has to take, that requires a drive every night, and we drive around the city, and, uh, you don't have any people in this city up Christmas decorations already. I passed one house that's got at least six Christmas trees, okay? The, the city is lighting up for Christmas, here it is, a few days after Halloween. It's a quiet city. We love it, okay? I've heard many people say, gosh, I wish Pecoson would be like it used to be, and occasionally, and I've said that myself, if they did two-thirds of the homes, then Pecoson wouldn't exist, okay? But it's always been a nice city, and if you look at how people decorate and how they have become so neighborly, okay? It's the best city in the world, okay? I wouldn't trade it for any city in the state of Virginia or the United States, okay? Great place to live. Thank you to the citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Southall. Mr. Freeman?
Yes, uh, it's been said, but I'll again thank, uh, Becky and Kevin for doing the, uh, Veterans Presentation, uh, Veterans Project, I should have said. And this is a very good crowd for one of our meetings and, you know, people in person. And again, encourage everybody to come out tomorrow morning, although it's gonna be cold and windy, wear a big coat, but to come out tomorrow morning for the American Legion-led Veterans, or, uh, Veterans Day Ceremony. It's, Veterans Day is always on the 11th day of the 11th, well, it's at the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month, which happens to be tomorrow at 11:00 AM. So, just like to invite everybody to come out. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Debbie?
I would like to thank everyone for being here tonight, and shout out for Becky. Um, Becky, what you do is wonderful. She, uh, is a well-respected teacher for us in our city, and I think it's wonderful that she continues to work with the Veterans Project since she retired. Um, that means a lot to our city and especially those folks and their fa, their families. It was very evident in the presentation tonight, so thank you for that. And, uh, wish everyone a great Veterans Day tomorrow. Think about those, um, family members that, uh, you have here with you, that you may not have here with you. Uh, my dad served in the Navy, and, um, he loved to tell me some of his experiences, and I am so thankful that I have those memories, um, for that. So, uh, Thomas, congratulations. Have enjoyed working with you, uh, very much. Um, Thomas is very good at what he does, and it's only, um, exciting for the city for him to grow in another area that he will give his service to the citizens in our city, and we will miss you as far as, um, our work with city council and department. So, that's all. Thank you all.
Thank you, Debbie. Appreciate that. Uh, I have several people I need to recognize, thank, and congratulate, uh, starting with our IT staff. So, thanks so much to Ms. Jen Canelo and Mr. Michael Thompson. Uh, could not put on the meetings without y'all. And if I could pile on just a little bit, also want to congratulate Mr. Thomas Canelo on his election to, uh, the position of Commissioner of Revenue, and many people will know that Thomas is a former council member, uh, first elected when he was 19 years old, so this is his, uh, second, uh, position he's held, uh, as, as an elected public servant. Also like to congratulate our current Commissioner of Revenue in advance, uh, Mr. Joe Caccimilio, who will, uh, enter into retirement at the end of this year, so congratulations to Joe. Would also like to congratulate, uh, our Assistant City Manager, Ms. Tanya O'Connell, on her election as President of the Virginia Local Government Finance Officers Association for the upcoming year. Uh, Tanya, uh, that's quite an accomplishment to hold a, a state-level position like that, so, uh, very well-deserving, I might add, and I'm sure you'll represent, uh, the city with fine colors as you always do. As we know, we had another very orderly and successful gubernatorial election, uh, on November 4th with early voting starting on September 19th. So, numerous people that, that deserve recognition and, and thanks. I'll start with Ms. Tammy Pinkney, our General Registrar and Director of Elections, uh, Ms. Tara Moore, uh, the Deputy Registrar. Our Electoral Board members consist of our Chairman, Mr. Louis Littlepage, Vice Chair, Ms. Jennifer Barnes, Secretary, Mr. Lynn Pauls, and also want to emphasize the multitude of volunteer public, or I should say volunteer poll workers that we have from across the city. Uh, these folks are vital, uh, to holding elections. There's no way in the world we could have them without these volunteers that dedicate countless hours of, of their personal time, so we certainly appreciate what they do. I just also thank so many city employees from various departments, uh, that support and cooperate so well to ensure that our elections run smoothly and are orderly and successful. And, uh, Chief Gates and the Police Department, uh, even received a special letter of appreciation from the Electoral Board, uh, for their efforts with, with traffic control, uh, on, on November 4th. If I could quantify it just a little bit, might remember last year during the presidential election, we had a voter turnout of 85%, uh, which was the, the, the number one position of all cities in the state of Virginia, right here, right here in Pecoson. Uh, we, we led, led the effort with 85%, and this little city, to use a, a term that the manager uses frequently, uh, we punch above our weight class in so many things. We have people right here in this community that, that provide leadership, uh, across the state, so very thankful to be a part of that. But so far as, as voting percentages, uh, my discussions with our Registrar's Office tells me that, uh, the gubernatorial election this year, we had a voter turnout of 61%. And just to put that in perspective, that's 10 points above the gubernatorial election from four years ago, uh, where we had 51%. And I was somewhat disappointed to hear that, 51%, but you know what? That too was number one in the state of Virginia at 51%, and we certainly like to see a higher voter, voter turnout than 51% for something as important as a gubernatorial election. But the fact that we, we are number one in the state, uh, for the presidential election last year and the gubernatorial, gubernatorial election four years ago just speaks to patriotism and, and the, the, the public, uh, service and spirit of community that exists here in Pecoson. We don't know yet what, what our 61% voter turnout is gonna do for us this year, but, but we'll see. It's just too early to tell. So, thanks to all for, for participating and, and contributing. Um, look no farther than our Military Memorial out front, and we'll see the names carved in stone of so many, uh, Pecoson boys that gave their lives to give us the opportunity to vote amongst so many other things, so we honor them. So, that's all I have for tonight. Uh, if there's nothing else, uh, from council or staff, uh, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Hearing none. Kristy?
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunty?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Mayor Hux? Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Kristi. We are now adjourned.